And we are live.
Welcome to the planning board meeting for December 2nd, 2020. I'll start with the roll call. Alden Clark. That's not a good start. Thought he was here. All right, put a hold on Alden. Beth DeLeo.
Here.
Anne Gardner.
Here.
Tanya Hartford.
Here.
Great. Leah McGovern.
Here.
Rick Tainter.
Here.
MJ Verde.
Here.
Don Walters.
Here.
Bonnie Sontag here, as is Linda Guthrie and planning staff and did Alden say anything about leaving?
No, I suspect he might have had a technical issue. I'll keep an eye out for him.
Okay, thanks. So our agenda for tonight, Institution for Savings is requesting a continuance to January 6th. The Office of Planning and Development has a DOD special permit for application for 98 State Street. That'll be our one public hearing. And then other business requests for minor modification at 47 Story Avenue. Approval of the minutes from November 18th, any zoning amendments or updates and we will be done. So let's get started with the request for a continuance for the Institution for Savings. And the draft motion is here. Would someone like to read it and make it for us, please?
Motion to continue to January 6th.
And a second, please. That was Ann, by the way. Okay.
And Leah.
Ann is the motion and Leah has the second. And I will do a roll call for approval. Alden. Technical problem. Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So we'll see them on January 6th. A public hearing on the Newburyport Office of Planning and Development's application for a DOD special permit at 98 State Street. I believe Andy is our presenter on this.
That's correct. Thank you. So Chair Sontag and members of the planning board, my name is Andy Port. I'm the Director of Planning and Development, obviously. I am representing the city in this application. It's a relatively minor scope of work, but the ordinance, the way it's written, requires approval for fences that are of any height. So in this particular instance, at the back of the library parking lot on State Street, there is a dilapidated fence. It's located in this image here by the green line you're seeing. And there's a couple of images we can show for that. We are, if you follow these images here, you can see how the fences falling over. Some of these images show a little better than others. So you can see the sort of character of the neighborhood that it's in, but basically what we're trying to do is clean up this fence here. And so what we're proposing is the type of fence that you see before you right now. The Historic Commission met on this and they recommended, and I'll pull up their recommendation, but they had recommended that the planning board approve it. As you know, that's part of the process for a DOD special permit is to have the Historic Commission weigh in on it. And so they had recommended that the, they found the fence to be of no particular importance in its present state and obviously recognize that it was dilapidated. So they had recommended that the planning board approve, and I'm just gonna display their letter to the planning board. So you know, with that, if there's any questions, we can answer them, but we feel like it's a pretty straightforward situation. The butter who I believe is here this evening, one of them has been working for a while and the, the bank Institute for Savings had contributed some funds to help with this project some time ago, but it's a lengthy process to get these things, the acceptance of the monies and the permit process and the contractors out there. So we're trying to get that going. And one of the processes that we have to go through is just the special permit approval. So we hope that you'll find this as a minor, you know, change on the site, something that's appropriate as proposed and issue approval tonight. Thank you.
Okay, well, we have Andy on before we take public comment. Are there any questions from the board members? I have one, the design of that fence that you showed us earlier, that was the one that you showed the Historical Commission?
Yes, the, the image, I pulled that up again.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one right there.
And they're fine with that?
Yep. Yeah, there's actually some, there's at least a few criteria in the ordinance relative to what types of fences are appropriate. And so again, we wanted to make sure the Historic Commission was on board and the ordinance also calls for that. So they had no problem with this fence. It's actually, I would suggest, a little bit more appropriate, a little bit more detail than what the current fence is. It's really kind of a standard stockade fence.
So this one is six feet to the, to the top of the, I don't know what you call that.
The post.
Part, the, to the post itself. Okay.
Right, the top of the, yeah. So that, that top foot is essentially a decorative item that the current fence does not have. Obviously, it's falling over, but it didn't have that in the first place. So.
Okay.
It'll be much more attractive fence for folks to look at as they're at least pulling in their cars there.
Yeah. Okay, let me open this for public comment. If you'd like to speak, please give your name and your address and speak no more than two minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? And Andy will unmute you.
And it sounds like we have Walt Thompson here.
Yes, thank you very much. I want to thank the planning board for considering this. We've been working on it off and on for about four years and we've gotten great support from Ed Dixon, the branch manager, Butter at Hinkop Associates, also from Suzanne Dubuque, the head of, as you know, the GNC, the Crisis Center. And it really is a great opportunity to reflect the the historical nature of that parking lot which used to be where the or where the Wolf Tavern used to be. And so we are working with the planning department on four historic murals that have been paid for. And these will be of the Wolf Tavern, the old YMCA Institution for Savings and the library. So it's kind of going on the, the great tradition of the murals on the rail trail by Water Street and other places as well as the Pleasant Street Alley. So it'll be a nice looking fence. The Butters love it and I appreciate your support. But I'd welcome any questions too.
Yeah. Could you please restate your name and your address and your relationship to the project?
Yes, Walt Thompson, 100 State Street here in town. And I've been trying to shepherd this thing through since the fence started to look the way it does.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? All right, I'll close the public comment portion of this hearing. We should look at the decision, see if there are any questions on that draft. Andy, are you gonna pull up the decision?
Sure, I can do so. The, the bottom line is it's, the only thing that's really relevant here is the the detail that is shown for the fence. So it's largely boilerplate decision referencing the illustrations in the application as the type of fence that's being approved.
Fine, that's good. Okay, further comments or questions? Rick, you're muted. Excuse me, Rick, are you trying to speak to us?
I, I thought I was unmuting myself, sorry. The decision says that the unless I'm reading the wrong thing, the decision says the application is pending? What does?
What do you mean? Where in the decision?
Conclusion and decision, for all of the reasons stated herein, the petition for a special permit is therefore pending. What does that mean?
It sounds like that's a typo. We'll, we'll check that before we have it signed. We'll, we'll check that. It sounds like a typo.
What should I say?
It should be, it should be approved. Yeah, I'll, we'll take a look at that. I'm not sure how that got in there. Apologies from the office. We'll take a look.
Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve the downtown Overley District special permit for 98 State Street in accordance with the draft decision.
I would make that motion.
Thank you, Rick. And may I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Alden. And then I will call roll call. So Alden is officially with us, Linda?
Alden, what time did you jump in?
It was at 7:03. I lost my connection momentarily, so I had to reconnect.
Thanks.
All right, this is the roll call for approval of this special permit. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes, sorry.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So you are approved City of Newburyport for a new fence.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And other business. Oh, did I close that public hearing? I probably didn't. Assume I closed it, Linda, please.
Okay.
Other business requests for minor modification for 47 Story Ave. This is coming back at us from November 18th, it looks like. And the applicant has made modifications. Is Tony here to speak?
Yes, Madam Chair, Tony Cappuccetti with Hayes Engineering, 603 Salem Street, Wakefield, Massachusetts.
Great, walk us through it.
All right, so last time we were here, we had an issue. The latest and greatest plans on the MassDOT website were actually the 75% plans that I had forwarded to the board and that caused some confusion. We've since gone back and created a new set just for the planning board that consolidated everything with a new date to make matters less confusing. And I'll run through the the changes. I provided a letter that does, does this as well. See one, very minor modifications. They were just notes and added sheets. See two existing conditions, again, pavement markings and stationing that MassDOT required, nothing that changed the site. See three demo and site prep, just to change the extent of the pavement to be removed. The layout materials, which is what we're on now. The, the westerly entrance or to the left of the screen, that was reduced to 16 feet in width. It was originally 24 with a 15-foot radius entering and a two-foot return because that is a one-way entrance. The first parking space was removed, so we went from 24 to 23 spaces. That would be the northwest or upper left-hand portion, which increased the landscape area in that section. The easterly egress or the right-hand exit was moved nine foot six inches to the west or to the left-hand side of the plan and then reduced in width to 20 feet with a 15-foot radius exiting. And then the crosswalk was changed from a continental style, which I prefer. However, MassDOT told me that they don't accept that style, so we had to go to the, the two-stripe style. However, we're still providing the crosswalk. The pavement markings and traffic signage at both entrance and exit were based off of MassDOT's recommendations and standards. There's a couple of do not enter signs on the exit and set up at a height of seven feet from the walking path to make sure that they don't obstruct anyone. The outdoor dining area in the front was rotated 90 degrees, so it's now more of an east-west fashion and a north-south fashion. And we reconfigured the railings. And one thing to note is based off the last time we did, Mr. Tainter brought up a good point. There was a bump out at the drive-through lane, which kind of added an area of shelter for a pedestrian. And his concern was that a pedestrian would just step out and a vehicle wouldn't notice that they were there and catastrophe could happen. So we moved the railing to force anyone exiting. The doors on the building, at the center of the building, anyone exiting to the east would walk along the building and then that railing would funnel them out a bit further and also force them to, to view the cars, walk parallel and then turn right to exit. So that increases site distance. As well as a ballad-mounted sign was placed where the vehicles are exiting and a picture is in the letter. I'll get to that after, but it's an internally lit sign that is in keeping with the Chipotle theme. But it says caution pedestrians and it's, it's a respectable sign that, that will also add to safety and these were the recommendation of member, member Rick Tainter. The parallel employee parking spaces to the southeast, bottom right of the plan, were nine by 22 originally. We reduced them to nine by 20. There is no size requirement and that's within standard engineering practice. No size requirement in the zoning. Parking spaces to the east are adjacent to Port Plaza, shifted west or away from Port Plaza by three foot six inches. If you recall, the butter was concerned with snow storage, so this will assist with that and also added additional landscape area. And newer vision date, the following plan, grading and drainage, minor changes based off of how the curb shifted just to stay consistent with the drainage areas. There was a net decrease in impervious surface of about 200 square feet that basically became an increase in landscape surface on the site. Utilities, the water service was relocated, approved by the, the town and that stopped us from having to go under 110. The landscape plan. We moved the, you'll see two spaces to the right of the planter sign. We shifted those a few feet off of the, the back of the sidewalk. They were originally approved against the sidewalk there to allow us to continue the, the boxwood, dwarf boxwood hedgerow across. We also spaces one, two, and three did shift to the north or to the top of the plan by about four feet, which did decrease that, that buffer. And Mr. Tainter brought up that he would like to see a larger buffer there. I discussed that with Chipotle. Their goal is to, when they, they start a facility is to have 25 spaces. They started off with 24 here. They lost one to DOT, which did increase the, the landscape buffer on the west of the building. And we added a, a paper birch that you'll, you can see next to the light post. However, we did lose some landscaping on the eastern side of the building. There was some discussion about removing space number one. Chipotle is reluctant to do that. Those, what they found through their operation study is they need at least three stopping spaces or holdover spaces for those customers that may show up early. And that leaves them 20 spaces, which for active use, which is consistent with zoning. We are overparked by three spaces to zone, but three of those are dedicated to pickup. Their feeling is that, that once they start reducing in additional spaces, it becomes a safety issue for queuing. So we, we've maintained that space and we're hoping the board is willing to, to discuss that decreased street buffer in that zone. And I do again point out that the two spaces to the front of the building were moved back to try and have some continuity of those, those boxwoods and keep a consistent hedgerow going across. And we did add, like I said, five boxwoods, a birch and three junipers to the site because we had 200 square feet of additional landscape. Lighting and photometrics. The light posts move but maintain a similar the foot candle rating throughout the site. And that was to just accommodate the, the shifting of the, the parking spaces. And then down at the south, we had originally anticipated mounting the light posts on the top of the wall. However, that proved problematic. The wall didn't seem in, in a position to handle that. So we cast two, two bases and went from three posts to two posts, but moved them closer together to, to maintain the same coverage. And then we added two MassDOT specific detail sheets with the traffic management plan, which again, doesn't really affect the, the site plan per se. Those are more for operations during the construction. And that, that summarizes the, the extent of the changes. And in the letter, there were a couple of pictures of that pedestrian sign. Actually, one picture of the pedestrian sign. And I, I did submit some pictures. They did install the landscaping. So the, the hedgerow up front is currently visible. So we'd like the board to consider this a minor modification. The, the city's engineer, Phil Christensen, or the, the planning board's engineer, rather, did send a, a letter that he considered this minor and that he, he feels that this is an improvement over what was originally approved by the board.
Good, thank you. Questions from board members? Rick, did you have anything you wanted to add or ask about?
Well, it isn't a question. I guess it's just a, my continuing concern and Tony knows about this. That, that I feel that the, the landscaping strip is so much less than Panera or McDonald's or Dunkin' Donuts, the three properties that are closest to it on the same side of the street. And I, I would really like us to to maintain or try to keep up. I think when you drive down Story Avenue, you don't really get a sense that it's overly landscaped. But this would be less than what we have now. It's better than what was there. But it's not as good as, as I say, Panera and Dunkin' and McDonald's, which, and, and, and also the CVS now at the corner of, of Low Street. My preference would be to, to lose space number one, as I said at the last, last time we discussed this. And I understand that Chipotle wants to maximize the parking on the site and it's basically a balancing act. My, my feeling is that, that providing the enhanced landscaping is a community benefit that in this case outweighs the, the benefit of one additional parking space. And I guess that would be my, my recommendation, but I don't know what, how other board members feel about that.
Anyone else want to chime in on that?
I would support that, Rick. If, if, I mean, I, I agree with you. I don't know. I think there's actually probably more parking than they need on this site. And if we could get some more landscaping there, I think that would, you know, that would be nice. And it also might help with snow storage as well.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think having a consistent landscaping strip there would be preferable.
I'm thinking the same way. And I'm also wondering about boxwoods that are sort of low. I don't re, I haven't been up that way in a while, so I don't remember what kind of landscaping you were referring to, Rick, on the other sites. Are they taller trees?
Well, I think that the that most of landscaping is, is low actually in that area. Panera has, and it has to do in a couple of cases with the topography where the, the lots slope away from the street more than this lot does. But Panera has I think lawn with bushes stepped back from the street. There you go. So there's a lawn in the front and bushes, it's kind of, there's a, a stone wall and then the bushes and trees set back from the street. Dunkin' Donuts has a, a steep slope from the street, but it's, it's got a combination of lawn and bushes. And then you get all the way to get convenient MD actually. Convenient MD actually has a, a, see, there's the fence and then the landscaping goes down from it. When you get, you, you get to McDonald's on the other side of that Port Plaza site and you've got some, I believe, some bushes and again, it's slowing. And then, yeah, there you go. There's convenient MD that've got a fence and some, some landscaping. So there just seems to be a lot more either greenery or verticality kind of defining the edge of the street. And that's why I thought it would be. I would, I would like to have as much of that as possible. We're obviously, we obviously won't get it in the middle of the site because the, the sign is there and the parking the parking spaces and so forth. So, so right there by the sign, you won't have it. But if we could get it back where parking space is one right now, one, where parking space one is right now, sort of as we had originally approved it. I, I would prefer that.
Rick, this is Andy. If I could just ask for clarification, it, it sounds like from the applicant's presentation that there are a couple of extra spaces. And it sounds like there's a potential here for having the two that are closest to the street, perhaps. If those were removed from there, that would allow the additional width for the landscaping you're talking about?
I, I'm not, I, I guess I'm really more concerned with the space that's marked as parking space number one. The, the space opposite it, I, I I think it's not as important because there's a raised sign there, a planter and a sign and landscaping on the other side. So it's not as important there. But right at the, right where parking space number one is, would give some more room for some, the landscaping that we had previously approved and, and, and provide some shielding and, and kind of some continuity with the adjacent properties.
Yeah, I'd be happy with that and forego any idea of larger or different types of trees there.
Yeah.
Because it does look like it would fit with the lower bushes. But I'd support replacing that with landscaping. And they did, I remember the application when they first came in. They were really promoting this as call ahead and pickup even before COVID hit. And that's going to be there, once people get used to it, will be a large part of their business. So this isn't looking like an eat-in restaurant with, oh, by the way, a pickup. It's sort of the other way around. So I would think that their parking losing one spot would not be, you know, a huge detriment to their business.
Are you, Madam Chair, may I respond?
Yes.
All right. So in, in talking with Chipotle, they, they already feel that this site is under, underparked. Like I said, they, they target 25 for the, the number of seats that they have inside and outside. Otherwise, they, they find that there's some conflicts with, you know, vehicles entering and exiting and having to wait for a spot. And you would think that you know, having to wait 30 seconds or so isn't a major issue, but when you're coming off of, of, of a road like Route 113, it, it, it does present a hazard to someone, although we did provide some queuing off the road. If, if you could look at what was approved. The, the spaces by the planter were originally at the, the edge of pavement. We, we've done our best to, to add that landscaping to, to try and break it up from the street line. The Chipotle is, is extremely concerned about the number of spaces. Like I said, once they get below 25, they, they start to get nervous. They had 24 and DOT took the space away. We actually increased the, the landscaping adjacent to Panera significantly. They're, they're trying to strike a balance. And if you, you look at the site in its, its previous condition compared to where it is now, some of the sites that you had shown, I can appreciate, however, those were built from new. We, we've kind of had to deal with the building where it is. We removed some of the, the rear portion of the building. So we're kind of stuck with, with what we had. And a lot of those have a single curb cut to the side, which allows for, for kind of that continuous landscaping along the street line. This one, it, it really made sense to have one-way circulation around the building just to, to, to make the site work. And I mean, uh, this is a, that site, this picture that's up there, I believe, was taken in 2019. I have September 2019 and I'd invite anyone to drive by the site now. It's, it's a vast improvement to, to what was there. Chipotle is really has high hopes for the site, that there really aren't any other Chipotles in the area. And, and they've had people stopping as they're building and saying that, that, that they're ready to, to start, start coming as soon as they open. And, you know, they, they really feel strong, strongly about keeping that space. I, I understand the desire for landscaping. If this was kind of a tear down and built for new, I think we could accommodate, but this is a, a redevelopment project. And, and I, I really think that it'd be difficult to, to consider this as an improvement. Not consider this an improvement. And, you know, I, I've been, Mr. Tainter's been great. I've been going back and forth with him. But I haven't been able to sway him. I'm hoping some of the, some of the board members can can, can see. can see where my client's coming from as far as the need. And, you know, we're talking 20 spaces for a store that should be doing about 500 customers a day or more. So that's
Yeah. Could, I'm thinking about making some trade-offs if we allow that, if we come off of the idea of landscaping parking lot number one, spot number one. What, remind us of what those plantings are, a long story of there, along the front of the parcel.
So those are, yeah, those are dwarf boxwoods and they're designed not to get much taller than two feet. And that's because we need to keep a clear sightline for a mass DOT permit. So we need to make sure that nothing grows greater than three feet.
Along the entire frontage?
At least along the exit. So that space one is, that's the critical one to be able to see.
Yeah, right. So what I was thinking was, I was looking at one of those other illustrations, images of Story Ave, I think it was Panera, that had upright, breaking up the front of the parcel with a couple of taller trees. And I was thinking you could put in something on the side that would not, yeah, that would not break up the sightline or would not disturb it to, with the boxwoods.
I think we could add, some of those look like Greenspire arborvitae. I think, you know, between three and four across the frontage would would work.
Yeah.
If that's something the board.
That would, that would, I just don't want, and I'm with you, I don't want any of it to get into the sightline issues about coming in and out of there. But far enough away on the corners, yeah. I think that would, that would help a little bit because it just seems like it's all, and now that I know that they're dwarf boxwoods or even smaller in the front, they're hardly going to show at all, but at least they're green. So this would help me with not, with leaving parking lot space number one. Anybody else want to comment, like Tanya and Rick who spoke up earlier?
I don't know. I, you know, when you compare the original plan, if the original plan not only had more landscaping on the right-hand side of the exit, it had a very large square of landscaping on the left-hand side of the exit, which is now been replaced by those parking spaces, which have moved closer to the sign. So, so I think by trying to get that landscaping back on the right-hand side, we're not even getting half as much landscaping as has been taken away. You know, that if you look at the original approved plan, there is probably a, I'm going to say a 12 by 12 square area of bushes and of different types of bushes that just aren't there anymore. And so I just, I'm just not comfortable getting down to this, this, this level of landscaping.
Um, could we, could, you know, one suggestion is, could we, once we have a parking spot, it's probably going to be a parking spot there forever. What if we started with some landscaping and we revisited it in a year, you know, or if you, if you decide, if they decide that you are getting queuing problems or something like that, you come back and we can revisit it as a parking spot. But I think, I think that overall, I mean, you're going to have people who are coming and going there. I think that, that you don't have a ton of employees there. You've got a pretty good queue for people picking up and their orders, which, which will probably be more, you know, of the folks who are coming in. So, so I, I feel like you probably have enough parking, but, but that would be another compromise.
So you mean just to approve it with the, going back to the removal of space one and getting that landscaping back in or the amount of landscaping that we had back in there in the, in the current approved plan? And then allow it, you know, I guess anybody can always come back and ask for a
Yeah, they can come back. Yeah, exactly. You could come back. Let's, let's take a look at it next year and we can then, and then you can take that out and build it. But I just think that at this point, you know, it, I think that Rick makes a valid point. I think that, that we, you know, this is, we sort of have to live with the building as it sits because of, it was an existing building and and I think that, that we might be, I think you might be able to get by without a space, but, but if you can't in a year, come back and we'll, we'll revisit it.
If, if the board's leaning is to remove the space, I'm not authorized to, to, to accept it and Chipotle would like to get someone from their corporate office out to make one last pitch if the board would entertain us for one more continuance. I don't know that it'll change your mind, but it would probably save me a lot of headaches if you'd entertain that request.
Before we do that, can we hear from anybody else on this?
I, I would agree. I'm supportive of having the landscaping put back. I mean, the one that we originally approved, if you guys are, I don't remember, but if what you're saying is accurate, that we had much more. I think it's really important to try and clean up that whole area and get some consistency with the landscaping out on the street. So I would support losing space one.
Anyone else?
Okay, I'll, I'll put my two hands in. This is MJ. I guess I, I am not in agreement with everyone else here. I feel like there is a great attempt here with the trees to make a much better landscape plan, certainly than the convenient MD. And many of the other ones, Panera happens to have a great site and they could set it back and like the applicant said, they had an existing condition to work with. I guess I feel like the tree to the west is sitting by itself, could use a lot more landscape around it if it doesn't impede on the sightlines as well as to the east. So I guess I just feel like it's not, I've driven by and it doesn't bother me so much. So I'm not necessarily agreeing with everybody here.
Others, please, so we can decide if we should continue this or just go ahead and approve it.
Just one, one question, this is Alden. As far as the, the trees by space number one and two, how tall are those? In the, in the triangular space?
So those are two additional paper birches. So those will grow maybe 20 to 25 feet when mature. Right now, they're maybe 10 feet tall, but they're inch and a half caliper. The spaces, the, the shrubs in front of it, those are blue carpet junipers. So they only get maybe 18, 24 inches high, but they're very hardy. And that's one of the snow storage areas. So that, that was the thought of having that buffer of those, those blue rug or blue carpet junipers to to allow the snow to go on top of it and not have to be replacing plants all the time. That is one of the prime snow storage areas. And then we have a little, you'll see a little dash line there. That's actually some, some landscape stolen surrounded by mulch to allow the water to drain down infiltrate into that area.
Thank you.
This is Ann. I guess, while I would like more landscaping, I think I would be persuaded to support what the business feels it needs. Now, if that hasn't been demonstrated and if Chipotle corporate would like to address that, I think I'd like to at least hear that. I'd be more inclined to, to leave the space if they felt that was important to the business. And, yeah, Beth?
So I am more in the camp with MJ and Ann, I think, but I, you know, it would be great to see more landscaping. But at the same time, if there's a business need, I do think it is a dramatic improvement over what has been there. And, you know, I feel like they've done what they can with it. So I would be more inclined to say if they really feel that they can't do without the parking space one, then I would approve as it is.
Okay, so Dawn, do you have any comments on this? Are you there?
Or can you hear me okay, Bonnie?
Very faintly.
And I've been hearing you very faintly. I'm going to hang up and redial and hopefully you still continue this.
Okay. Reason why I want to hear from everyone is that we're sort of split. But Andy, remind me, how many how many votes do we need on a minor modification? Five or six?
Just five.
Yeah, okay. Although I don't really like to push a vote if we're just split. The other consideration is if we continue this, it shouldn't be to the 16th because both Ann and Rick cannot be there. And while it's a minor, it's still a very, it's important to the applicant. And if we're going to have everybody part of this conversation, who's made a comment tonight, which is pretty much all of us, I think we should all be here. Let's see what Dawn has to say and then we'll decide what we want to do. Okay, Dawn, we can see you, but you're muted.
I suspect you can hear me very faintly, Bonnie. Am I correct?
Yeah, it's breaking up.
I'm going to have to chop out of my microphone. Please do not keep the, hold it for me. If you can hear me, I'm speaking as loudly as reasonably. I apologize. It's too loud.
No, no, we can't really make it out. Sorry. All right, we'll make a decision. I think we're split enough that we probably ought to continue this. Does anyone have any other suggestions?
Chipotle is willing to add some additional arborvitae's out front. I, I'm texting with the their, their leader, their design team, and they'd be more than willing to, to add some taller landscaping where possible, if that helps with anyone on the board.
That was just me. I didn't hear anybody else. I think
For me, I mean, I, if some of the plantings, I appreciate MJ's comment about maybe adding some more robust planting around the tree on the, on the west side and maybe even if it's possible in the snow storage area. I don't know if that makes sense, but if there were some more robust plantings, I would be willing to change my perspective.
All right, that's two more of us.
Yeah, and I would go along with that as well.
Are we talking about, are we talking about arborvitae's like on the front, like against the sidewalk?
Yeah, but way away from any entrance or exit so that it wouldn't
Yeah, because we wouldn't want it too high. We want to make sure that they're, you know, what size are you thinking? Is it Tony? Sorry.
Yes. So I'd probably look to keep them trimmed to no higher, higher than seven or eight feet. So there would be the greenspire, so they're very narrow. And I would, the way I'm envisioning is on the Panera side, kind of frame that, that white birch, setback maybe eight feet from the sidewalk with the arborvitae on each side of it. It'll also kind of shield the light post that's labeled A there. Then a couple of, two more next to the, where you see JH adjacent to the handicap parking space in the middle. And then another two, so, so a total of six, another two kind of on either side of that, that birch or BP in the snow storage area, but set far enough back that they don't intercept the side triangle from, from the exit.
And then the ones, the ones along the sidewalk that say BS are those, those wouldn't change? They would stay the same?
Those, those are in and we don't plan on touching them. Those are dwarf boxwood and what they're
Oh, those are already there. Okay, got it. Okay.
In another three years, they should make a solid hedge.
What size trees are you putting in? Like what are you, are they going to be, what size are they going to be when you plant them?
I could probably get ones that are, that are already close to five feet. We wouldn't be able to plant them until spring.
Right. But I just, I mean, it would make a difference if they, if you put them in and they were bigger and more, you know, they, as opposed to some of the smaller ones, you know, because then you, we would actually see more immediate growth. And so that might be another.
I, I'd be willing to commit the five feet at the size, time of planting, maybe a little taller if we can find them, but you can usually find some five-foot ones at some of the local nurseries.
We'll order them now.
Yeah, we'll put our order in. If, if, if this saves me from coming back, I'll go dig them up from my yard.
What else I can get out of you? No, I mean, I think, I think that mature planting or something that adds, I think that might help. I mean, I still think, I still don't think you need that parking space. And I, and I still would love to keep it as a landscape. I just would hate to have you guys continue to December or to January because I know you're trying to open. What, what is the proposed, when do they plan to open?
So their, their goal is, we missed the, they open every two months on the 15th. We missed the November 15th date. They're hoping January 15th to open, but we're, we're dealing with national grid, which does not move
Good luck with that.
Extremely fast. So we're still waiting for electricity there.
And I've heard that's holding up projects everywhere, actually, so.
It, it is tough. And, you know, they're still catching up from the strike, plus the COVID shutdown. It, it's tough for them too, so.
It's bad. All right. So that would be, Bonnie, that would be my vote. If we could get some, some bigger trees at planting, so just, we could just add that in. And then adding in these extra arborvitae's where Tony mentioned would, would satisfy me.
Right. So going back to any other plantings that you could add in, Tony, can you suggest anything for that request as well?
Can I just amend my comment a little bit? When I talk about robust plantings, one thing that I, when I see these plans, I see these little dunk, dunk, dunks. If everybody knows what I mean by that, these isolated plantings, I would like to see clustered, something that would be much more aesthetic. You know, I don't mean to micromanage the design, but I just think that with a little more thought and some clustering, carefully thought out clusters of shrubbery or whatever, just, it's just much visually much more appealing. And with that, I, I am finished.
Bonnie?
Yes.
So I can see this is not going the way I would like it to go. But I, I am concerned about, and maybe you want to postpone it to the 16th, if this is the way you're going. I'm concerned about talking about bushes and shrubs and trees and trying to write a decision on a plan that we haven't seen. I mean, so I think that
I agree with that.
If some, I just, I just don't think this is a good, a good process for approving, reviewing and approving a site plan. If the majority of the board wants to go in that direction, I think we should see a plan, the board should see a plan that it votes on. I don't think we should vote on something and say, we approved the plan that we saw, plus adding two plant, two trees to the left of the entrance and two trees to the right of the exit. I just don't think that's a good, good process.
No, you're absolutely right.
Andy, I would agree with that.
So, so if, I mean, I think there were two options. One is to, to do what I'd like, to get the landscaping back and have a real buffer there. Or, and the other is to, and as you're right, we probably should wait until, if that were the case, we would want to wait until January when a couple of us can be there. Or if the board wants to go ahead in a different direction, ask the applicant to come back with a revised landscaping plan that, that shows exactly what is being proposed. I mean, I, I agree with the dunk, dunk, dunk comment.
No, it was doink, not dunk.
Doink, okay. But, you know, when you look at the, when you look at what's out there right now, it's, obviously it's going to grow, but it's just a line of, of shrubs and it's not clusters at all. It would be nice to have clusters rather than regularly spaced plants if it were possible. But, but I'm, I'm digressing. I guess my point is, I don't think we should vote on a plan and say, we accept this plan, but we want to add six bushes in various places around the site.
No, I agree. We've, we've said this before, that we really have gotten into trouble when there was anything more than an extremely minor change to a plan. So, and that would just take us to the 16th of December. We can still take the vote with eight, with seven of us here. So I would, I would go with that, that, Tony, you So I, I would, I would go with that, that, Tony, you'd get a, a revised landscaping plan. And it might mean that, you know, they have to use the same plantings they have now, but rearrange them in the spring to add additional plantings to make it a little more interesting. But that being said, we need the plan in front of us before we can approve it. Would that be doable?
I'm more than happy to, to do that. If, if you could get me on for the 16th, I promise not to be as long-winded as tonight.
And. Talk about, we're going to assume that everything else is fine because I haven't heard any comments one way or the other. I just wanted to, on other items, I just wanted to make sure that we have, there's something about a condition two from the previous decision, the original decision about an exit sign that was identified in the wrong place.
Taken care of.
That's been taken care of. So it's on the plan and we just incorporate that into the minor modification that we approve, that we vote on when we get the landscaping sorted out, right? Okay. So let's have a motion to continue this application to December 16th.
Make that motion. So moved.
Leah. Leah. And a second?
I can second that, MJ.
Thank you. And I'll take a vote on approval. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don? Can Don gurgle at us? Or he doesn't have to really. It's all right. Bonnie, yes. Oh, he, he, I think he said yes with a sign. Yeah, okay. Take him as a yes, Linda. Okay, Donnie, we'll see you on the 16th and shouldn't take very long. You're right.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate you taking the time to discuss this. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Approval of minutes for November 18th. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved, Alden?
Alden, thank you. Second from Rick. Any comments, changes, edits? All right, call roll on that. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tanya?
I abstain. I wasn't at that meeting.
Thank you. Leah?
Oh, wait, was this the meeting I was at?
Last meeting.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, you were. Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don? Yep, and me, Bonnie, yes. So that's all the business that's itemized. Anything on zoning amendments from anybody?
This is indeed, oh, sorry.
Well, I was just going to tell Bonnie, I mean, I, I know that the Affordable Housing Trust was looking for some, something for me, 60, and I sent that out today.
Good, so they now know what your research was based on and they'll decide what they want to do with that?
Exactly.
Okay, so speaking of 60, Andy, have you had a conversation with Heather about sponsoring it and maybe getting together and telling her about it?
Yeah, she's just, we have to pin down another time, another session with her. We had to reschedule a new call, so we just need another time.
All right, so it's just sitting there. Okay.
And the short-term rental units, I'm obviously not expecting any action by the council. By the end of this year, I'm expecting that to go carry over into January at this point. So unless you have further, you know, thoughts on, on that particular matter, we assume it's in the council's hands at this point.
Anything from anybody on that? Okay. Any updates, Andy?
I'm not sure there's much worth noting at this point. We have a lot going on, but unfortunately, because of the COVID situation and things like the waterfront park project I'm working on, Jordy with his capital project, we've, you know, some of our efforts related to zoning have been diverted a bit temporarily, so I'd like to offer more to you on that, but unfortunately, that's going to have to be carried over into the early part of next year at this point.
Man, just ask, what, what project are you referring to? This capital project?
The central waterfront park expansion.
Yes.
Yeah, we're finally getting going now that the NRA is dissolved and there's a parking garage to move the spaces to, where we're expanding the, the parks. So we're selecting consultants and I've been spending a lot of time with the consultants that are submitting proposals to us, so.
That's fun.
Anything else from anybody?
Just one thing, Bonnie. So the, the planning office actually directed me and Tony to talk to each other about this Chipotle project. And I'm happy to do that, but I'm just not sure about the, you know, whether that's the, the protocol for this, you know, how, whether we should be, you know, to the extent to which I should be doing this outside of the planning board. And whether other planning board members feel comfortable with me talking to, to an engineer or developer outside the planning board. It's, you know, I don't mind doing it. I just don't know, it's just, I'm just wondering about the process.
So this is what you, you're asking about, what you've already done. Use this as an example going forward.
Yeah, do we want to do this? I don't, I don't know whether this is a good thing to do. It was meant to expedite the, you know, I, Tony asked me for my opinion and why, or to explain what I had said in the planning board meeting and so forth. And so it ended, it turned into a more of a conversation perhaps and you know, sort of acting almost as a second consultant on it, I guess. But I don't, I don't know whether that's a good thing to do, I guess.
Yeah, this is Andy. Generally speaking, I agree with the, the concern that Rick has raised. I think what the suggestion here was just we recognize that, you know, as, as compared to say a controversial project being initially approved and expansion or whatnot, this boiled down to some site level details that we, we did feel like it would be faster for the applicant, knowing that there were, you know, weeks can go by between meetings. That given that Rick had some concerns that could be addressed by a little bit of back and forth with the applicant, we thought that rather than having those suggestions tossed back to us and then back to the board and then back, you know, again, we thought that's, given there's some overlap between the, the parking, number of parking spaces, the landscaping, being different options that might be available for making the adjustment to satisfy one of our primary concerned board members, we thought it would be more efficient to try to get the applicant to make revisions prior to the next planning board meeting. So that was, again, just in simplicity, that was the, the reason why we had reached out to or suggested maybe Rick get in touch with the applicant directly on that, just to speed things up in that respect. Generally speaking, I agree with the, you know, the, the concern that Rick notes is we, we do recommend for substance of matters where, you know, particularly where a project being initially approved, the whole scope of it, that might not be appropriate to do something like that. In this case, we found it to be a minor modification level detail that we didn't think was going to be particularly controversial. So again, we were just trying to be efficient about things.
Anybody else want to comment on your impressions of that? So I would only say that as long as everything that is discussed is brought back to the public hearing or the public meeting in this case, that's fine. You know, and I'm sure that's what happens because you're working toward a plan that meets all the concerns and you had specialty knowledge in this, in this particular case. And it may be somebody else next time with, I don't know, pick something, design or I don't know, landscaping that somebody knows about or what have you. So.
I guess I would just add to that. I mean, I'm, I'm fine if, I'm fine with Rick meeting with anybody. It's just it would have been helpful at the outside of this, of this discussion to have been made aware that a, a meeting had previously occurred and the topic of it. So, because I, I thought that, that was just Rick expressing his view. I hadn't known that there was already a conversation that they had had about that and that he, so it was helped, it would have been interesting to know that Tony had already heard this and decided against the recommendations.
Plus it would be in the record as well. Which I think helps, yeah. I wouldn't make a habit of it in general. But if anybody, as I said, has any specific expertise or interest in something, we can certainly discuss it. And I'm glad you brought it up, Rick, because it then allows us to talk about it the next time before anybody goes off and does it and then feels nervous about it. Because I don't want anybody to be in the middle of a conversation with an applicant and think, oh my God, I shouldn't be having this meeting. Or whatever went on in your head. So that's good. All right. I think we're good to go. So for the two of you who won't be with us on the 16th, happy end of the year, happy beginning of a hopefully much better year. And we'll see the two of you in January and I hope we'll, we'll see everybody else on the 16th.
Yay.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Who suggested that? Maybe you want to make the motion.
I guess it was me, if you can hear me, Bonnie, it's Don.
The most important motion of the night, Don.
We know your real interest, Don.
I will second that motion.
Okay, okay.
I, I gotta call roll. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Linda and staff, and see you next month, later in the month.
Bye, everybody.